Mayor Roland Dyke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Crawford.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight. Elder Woman Luanna Audinger.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fencham.
Here.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of previous meeting, which you have in your packet. Are there any additions, subtractions, or deletions to that, to those minutes?
Mayor, I need to point out a minor typo that's in your copies. We have fixed that on the copy that is to be signed. But in the process of working on the minutes, inadvertently, Mike Hannan, even though we love him dearly, his name got put in two or three times in our overvotes where she copied and moved forward and didn't get that deleted off the top. And so it should just say roll call, and that's it. But it says roll call, Mike Hannan. And so we have deleted that off of the copy that will be signed by you and myself. So if they would approve as amended, we'd appreciate it. We apologize for that oversight on our part.
Okay. You have, will someone make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
With the following amendment that you just explained, okay? You have a motion on the board to approve the minutes of the February ninth, 2021 meeting. It's been properly seconded. Will please approve by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Nays, like what? Like sign. And hearing none, motion carries. Next on the agenda is something that has, we're really, really proud of. We're now going to have the recognition of our Newport Grammar School Boys Basketball Team. For most of you know, from the crowd that's here now, I'm sure you understand that what's happened in the past week, these kids have really put Newport on the map. Again, we're very proud of their accomplishment. And if you would, we'd like for all you members of the team to come up and have your picture made. And we have a little presentation for you. Yeah, we'll put them behind us.
Fifteen of them, so we're gonna squeeze them in, I guess.
Should it stay standing?
It should.
Eugene is gonna take-
Mayor, I told them to wear their Sunday best, but they all got baseball and basketball practices they leave here, so they got here the way they could.
What are you on, Tim? Get out of the way?
No, you're in it. The boys take your mask down, all right? So make some good things.
It's about you guys.
I was gonna call, tell them Steve Spurrier called me and congratulated these boys, too.
Do y'all know who Steve Spurrier is?
Probably not. But he used to play for Newport Grammar School. And when he saw that, first time in history, school had ever done that. So he called and congratulated them, too.
For y'all that play baseball over in the park, he says that, well, I know for a fact, his father started the Little League program at the Newport City Park. He brought it from Athens, Tennessee, when they moved here from Athens. Steve Spurrier's father.
You're right.
And he says that the stadium over there was built because he built it. But he played baseball over there. But he wasn't an eight-year-old when he left.
He hadn't forgotten his roots, so he called.
That's true, that's true.
Before I present this, I think we have some folks that would like to say a few things. Our city councilor, chairperson.
Well, for the council members, I'd like to brag on the rec department. Every one of these gentlemen played in the city rec for the, of all team with the city through Tim's program. Most of them started when they were five, six years old. I coached most of them, with them and against them, so I know them all very well. I think they're here today because, in a large part, they played against each other. They fought like brothers fight when they were playing, but it made them better. It made them good enough to win a state championship.
Back seeing McCott County High School next year, wouldn't have regretted it.
I thought Terry was gonna say because he coached them.
I coached them, not all of them.
Alderman, have you anything you'd like to add?
I just want to say I'm very proud of y'all. I played up there years ago, but I'm not gonna tell you how many years ago. Very proud of y'all.
I played there, too, many years ago. Wait for you, it's a ball.
Congratulations. Y'all have worked really hard, and this is well deserved. Proud of each and every one of you.
Congratulations. It's great fun for our city as well. Thank you.
So they tell us we need to scoot in, boys.
Yeah, we gotta, gotta say one other thing, too.
Yeah, well, let me say a few things first, if I can.
One other thing, Tim, before you go, if you don't mind. We will have plans to erect a sign at the entrance to the city, I think on the west and the east side, acknowledging your accomplishment. It'll say something to the effect of, "Welcome to Newport, home of the Newport Grammar School State Championship Basketball Team."
Amen. Amen. What I was gonna say, Mayor, is our secret team that's back here, and when these boys went to Murfreesboro to play for the state championship, they made it a very memorable experience with the, they held, they held no expenses back for these boys to meet, from finding us gyms to practice while we were there, to feeding them, the hotel rooms, the parents taking care of them. And it was absolutely amazing. You just have to be involved in it to really understand it. It was fantastic.
It's group effort.
It takes a team. Yeah, you're right. It took a team to win. So we went to Harriman, and just like Cosby did last night, we won games there, and we advanced the same way as Cosby's moving up to Murfreesboro now also. So they got to experience what you, boys, what you experienced in high school, is playing on them high school gym floors. Fantastic.
Tim, we want to present this to you, or to one of your captains?
Well, those guys right there in the middle are the captains right there. All of them are eighth graders in the middle right there. So, Kyler, you guys accept that.
We have certificate of achievement for your outstanding achievement. Says, "The City of Newport, recognizing Newport Grammar School Boys Basketball Team as State 2021 TMSAA Class A State Championship." Congratulations.
Thank you.
Cockford said we're gonna have to tighten up, I guess.
Gotta scoot in, boys. Regina says scoot in.
I think Mom's here. Can we wait to stand in it and get him a picture? I want to stand in it and get Mom.
Tell her your name.
Yeah, tell her that.
You want me to tell them, or you guys want to talk?
They can tell her your name.
You know your name?
No, he doesn't even know where he's at.
Okay, all right. Let me say a few things first. Again, there's eight of these guys that are returning. There was fifteen of us. So eight of us are returning, and seven of us are graduating. So we'll start right here with a sixth grader. Speak loud and tell who you are.
Maurice Simmons.
Maurice Timmons.
Speak loud.
Loud and proud. Who is that?
Ethan Font.
Will Sutton.
Trent Lees.
Kyler Hayes.
Stae Ho.
Ellis Thomas.
Mattx Carter.
Scotty Hall.
We heard most of them. I think some of them were a little quiet there, a little timid, but we heard most of them. You tell them that.
Hold on, Tim, we got a picture. Are we tightening up, Regina?
Congratulations. You guys believe that you like where you stay for the season?
Yeah. Why? Why's everybody leaving? Nobody wants to stay from there. What's up with that?
Lost two-thirds of our audience, I believe.
Next on the agenda is our communications from our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll apologize in the beginning for my long agenda this month. I think this is the longest agenda I've had, so I'll try to be as fast as I can with it. On our monthly COVID update, I thought we were gonna make it the entire month without anything to report, but we, as of Saturday, we did have an employee who was exposed and is currently in quarantine. But for the month since the last meeting, that's the first incident we've had. And I thought we were gonna, like I said, I thought we were gonna make it the entire month without any, anything COVID-related with our employees. But Saturday, we had an exposure, and he is in quarantine. The next thing I have, and I've spoken to y'all a little bit about this, and I've done a little more research per some of your requests, it's my intent, excuse me, to begin a city litter crew, a couple days a month on the weekend. As each of you know, that for years, we were very blessed and fortunate to have an inmate litter crew, thanks to the volunteerism of David Veridahl. And the work that he did, and of course, we recognized him on multiple occasions for being a volunteer of the year, for the things that he did and happened around town, trying to keep the town clean, anything we had going that required hands and feet on the ground, he was just excellent to bring inmate labor and to help us.
He's there, boss.
Yes, sir. But what has happened, of course, he's been very sick, and we wish him the best and pray for him. But also what has happened, the inmates, all the inmates that could be have been released due to the pandemic. And the county's litter crew has been dormant for months and months, and actually just started back up last week. And they have six, he says, he only has six inmates that he can use for his litter crew. And Ben talked to him about, you know, the reason we know that is because Ben talked to him about, you know, if there's a possibility to try to get something back up and running like David did in town. And he says there's just no inmates available. And I know several of you have told me, and I've had multiple complaints about litter around town, and I can tell a difference in it. I can tell a big difference on the Edwana Road going home, just right outside east of here going home. It's just covered in trash. And I'm tickled that the county litter crew has started back up. But in town, we need to do something to address this issue. And so what I plan to do is, two days a month, two Saturdays a month, I'm gonna try to have a litter pickup. I'm gonna coordinate that with Keep Cock County Beautiful and see if they can get some volunteers to come in and help. And that way, they can get some credit to the state, Keep Tennessee Beautiful, for the efforts they're making here in town. But I was really surprised when I did the research on it and kind of checked to see how many employees with Parks and Rec and Street and Sanitation that might be interested in coming in on a Saturday, and about all of them signed up. And about all of them just want comp time. So there's not really any cost involved, just some time off. So if y'all don't have any problem with it, it's my, and it doesn't require a vote, you can just talk to me afterwards or whatever, because this doesn't require a vote, and I'm not asking you to put it on the agenda, there's no need. But I do like knowing where y'all stand on stuff. And if y'all don't have any problems with this, it's my intent to put that in play in April. And try to have two four-man crews, and if as many that has signed up, I may have three four-man crews, I don't know. But to get out and try to get litter picked up around town and in some of the really bad areas. And I ride around town every day, and I can tell you firsthand, it's a problem. It looks really bad. And I want to get town looking good before the tourist season starts, and we have all this traffic getting off up here at these two exits and coming into town. I don't want them to leave and leave here thinking what a nasty town this is. So that's, it's my intent to do that. And again, I don't think it's gonna cost us really any money, because everybody said they'll take comp time, except one or two. And so, you know, it's a win-win. It's a way for these guys, a lot of these guys that work for these two departments are new or have been here less than three years, and so they don't really have much vacation time or anything. And this is a way for them to get a little more time off during the year, to have a little comp time, to take a day here and there when they need it. And so I feel like it's a win-win for everybody. It doesn't really cost money, and we can get the town cleaned up.
I spoke with Mr. Veridahl, and he said he'd help us any way that we, and he also has like a map, a hot box, what they use to hit.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate that. Yes, sir. I appreciate that.
David Veridahl.
Okay. Along that same line, I know each of you are familiar with the city limits signs that indicate where the city begins on all the state highways. Okay. If you come down the Cosby Road, this is the city limits sign that you'll see when you first come into the city limits coming into town, coming north on Highway thirty-two, or three twenty-one, or Cosby Highway, whatever you want to call it. Now, if you come in on the west side of town, this is the city limits sign you'll see, if you come from Porch at Dandridge into town. Now, we have five city limits on state highways, and these are the only two signs that are currently in place. The others are missing and are gonna have to be replaced regardless of what we do. And I know you guys get around just like I do, and about everybody around us has gone from these generic signs to something that is more ornamental and that represents the community better, in my opinion. And so I've kind of thought about it, and what I would like to do, and again, this doesn't require a vote, but I do like having y'all seal of approval on things, it's my intention to go to this. This matches the welcome to Newport signs that we have, two of. It matches the signage we've started putting on the municipal parking lots, and this is what I would like to put at the city limits, at the five city limits, coming into town. And Jeff Cody, who designed the original one of these, and I'm just following the same theme so that everything matches, but he did one, that was what it would look like in place. And this was out there coming into town from Dandridge, where the O sign is, the second sign I showed you, the white generic sign. And he was able to Photoshop this into place that, so you could see what you would see if you were coming down the highway, that's what it would look like.
Would this be where the championship signs would go also?
Yes, sir.
Under all of them?
Well, it would be, they would just be behind this. After you come to this, you know, about maybe twenty, thirty feet, you'd come to the other side. Yeah, they would all be, they would all be at the city limits, but they would be spread out far enough to where you could see that sign and then see and read the other sign, too. I don't have a rendering of the other sign. I just have, I just have that on here.
I like the idea of the uniformity across town, that other stuff, kind of how the Cornfield County looked.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and especially, you know, I've noticed in going to Marsh Town, going to Sevierville, and even White Pine, Dandridge, I mean, they've gone to these more ornamental signs. And I think they look good. I think it makes the, makes the community look more appealing and like we take more pride in it than that generic stuff. And they're not very expensive at all. And I, you know, I think for no more money than, you know, you're not talking about very much money at all above what we spend on the other signs. So I just think those look much better, and I think those will represent our community much better. And again, I want to get these things up in April, so they'll be ready for tourist season.
I like it. I think it looks nice.
Now, the mayor mentioned earlier, the Newport Grammar Basketball Championship signs. What I, you know, again, what I have in my, you know, in time traveling, you'll notice when you go into communities, there'll be a sign that recognizes state championships, whether it be football, basketball, and, you know, and I think those are neat. And this is such a momentous occasion, something we've never had here, and no telling when, and probably not, probably not in our lifetime we'll see it again. And so I just felt like it would be a good thing to commemorate this occasion by putting one of those signs up, just about twenty, thirty feet behind these signs that says, "Home of the 2020, 2021 State Basketball Champions, Newport Grammar School Boy Warriors," something to that effect. I don't have a rendering of it, it won't be fancy like these signs, but I just felt like we needed to do that, to recognize that achievement, and then something to be proud of, that shows our pride in our school, in these young people, and, you know, again, I've spoken to y'all about it one-on-one, and I know everybody has thought it was a good idea, but I wanted to get it in here, just so people, just to get the public aware of it partially, and just to make sure that, if y'all had any public comments to make about it, you'd have an opportunity. Because, you know, even though I can do this stuff without y'all's support, I don't want to do any of this stuff without your support. I just believe we're a team, we work together, and I don't want to do anything you guys aren't on board with. And I know you're on board with all this stuff I've talked about, but I wanted to get it out here so the public would know what we're doing. Now for some bad news. The storm during Project Downtown. Well, I'll give you some good news first. The good news is, obviously, main street's open. And, you know, that thing drug on forever with one snag after another that kept keeping the street closed, even though at the very beginning of the project, we were assured that we'd only be closing the street for two days. And it turned into I don't know how many days. I lost count, and I know Gary was having nightmares about it. But now-
Is he feeling a witness relocation?
Yeah, I think he is. I think he's incognito. But we have, we've hit a major snag right now. As y'all know, this thing is going across the Old Mill site down there, and, you know, it's a trunk line to the river. We only have two trunk lines to the river, this is a third trunk line, a huge pipe to help get this water out of downtown and drain downtown so we can alleviate this flooding and get this water to the river where it can get out of here. Well, in the process of digging or ditch, we have hit a gas tank, an underground gas tank on the Mill property. Evidently, the Mill had its own gas tank. And we are gonna have to have that thing looked at by a qualified and certified group, organization, whatever, that can evaluate what we can do there, because we're gonna have to get that out of there. And if it has spilled, you start talking about a problem. And so just to get one of these experts to come look at it's gonna cost us $4,500. So you can imagine if we have to get into a bunch of abatement issues, what that's gonna end up costing. I dread to see it. But right now, we're back, we're kind of back at a standstill until we can address this gas tank. I know Gary's been on the phone, I don't know if he made any headway, he was trying to find somebody to come look at it and evaluate the situation on where we are with it. But it's about a $4,500 bill just for them to come look at it. All right. Last. Yeah, I know you'd be happy to hear that. Hear the other shoe drop. I'm about to wet my whistle. Liquor stores. A couple of years ago, when the lobby for grocery stores fought to have the ability to sell wine, the package stores, the liquor stores, were opposed to it, and because they felt like it was gonna hurt their business. And so the state, the only concession they gave in to the, to the package stores was that they would put a moratorium on new package stores. In other words, that they would not allow any new package stores until July one of 2021. And so for, since then, we, every so often, we have someone come down, and they will want to put in for a liquor store. And we tell them, you know, well, you can't. You know, they're not giving out any new liquor stores till July 2021. Well, now what the state, because that is just a few months away now, what the state is doing is telling people that they can go ahead and put in an application at the local level, which is us, for here. And let it be sent, once the process has been fulfilled at the local level, then it can be sent into Nashville, and then they will look at it after July one. And so the, some of these folks that have been keeping track of it have been calling wanting to know, hey, when can I put in my application? And so I need some guidance from you guys on how you want to proceed. Currently, we have four people or groups that have shown interest in having a package store. And we had one package store close a couple year ago, two years ago now, Interstate Package. And some of them are interested in that location, some of them are interested in other locations. But, you know, when, when package stores were first approved here, the state allowed us to start out with three. And so a lot of people have the misconception that we can only have three. We can have as many as you guys approve and gal. And so number one, you need to decide, do you only want to stick with three package stores? And if so, then that means you've got one to fill, and you've got four groups or individuals interested in it. And you're gonna have to decide what your elimination process is gonna be. There's a $500 non-refundable application fee. And me personally, I hate, I hate to take $500 from somebody and then tell them you can't have one. I would suggest that you allow them to, if you decide you only want one, I would suggest that you allow them to fill out just a resume type thing with the names of all the owners, the location, the size, and so on. And then let you guys evaluate those and pick one that can put in their application. Because once you, once you approve it here and send it to Nashville, then you've approved it. They could, you know, we don't know what they're gonna do down there. They could turn them all down, possibly, but they could also approve them all, possibly, and you'd have four more liquor stores, and you'd have a total of six. Now, if you want six, that's up to you. I have no preference in it. I don't care if you stick to two, and I don't care if you go to six. It's, it makes absolutely no difference to me either way. I just need guidance on how to proceed. So there's no action to be taken tonight. It's just something I wanted to bring to everybody's attention, to give y'all time to think about it and to decide. time to think about it and to, to decide, one, how many do you want to do? Do you want to stick with three? You want to not have any more? Stick with two? You want to open it up for as many as it wants more? That, you know, that's the choices. If it's the one, then you're going to need an elimination process. So the, other than that, you've got all four, you're going to allow the, all four of them to pay that $500 fee and then bring them in here and turn them down. And I just, you know, me personally, I don't think it's a good way to do business, and I think that just makes hard feelings, because people figure, well, you knew you weren't going to give it to me, but you, you allowed me to spend $500 anyway. So I'm just trying to, I'm trying to keep down bad PR and, and hard feelings from that standpoint. Well, Mayor, I've been long-winded enough. I, I appreciate y'all's time and attention.
Are you asking for any input from the board tonight?
No, sir. No, no, sir. I just think about it, and at your convenience, just contact me and we'll talk about it.
Lucas, I want to tell you and Lynn, I appreciate what y'all did, having that meeting at Tanner Building. I learned a lot, helped a lot, and I'd like the rest of these two that more appreciate what y'all did. Thank you.
Problem. Go ahead and do it.
Okay. The next on the agenda then, no appointment of boards, commissions, or committees. We're down to item number seven, which is reports from committees, members of council, and other officers.
I have to report, Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I have to do that? I have a feeling, so nothing from the hand.
Okay. Keep the good news going.
Just as Mike just mentioned, I will say that Congresswoman Hoshbarger was here for that meeting on Fri- last Friday, and several of our board members did attend, and she was very impressed with what we've done with that building, as well as some, her staff and some other folks that had toured that building. So we're just moving along. I thank Tim and his group for what they've done in terms of getting the landscaping done. We've still got some work to do with striping to the parking lot and that kind of thing. But overall, I think everybody is, is very, is very proud of what we've been able to do with that building.
Keep Cock County Beautiful.
We're just going to go over our litter index that we performed about a month ago. I had to think. It's been a while. And so we go around and we choose like 10 roads in each area of the county, and for the city of Newport, we chose 10 roads. And the litter index is on a scale of one to four. One is minimal litter, and four, of course, is areas that are heavily littered. So Newport as a whole got a score of 2.9. The county as a whole got 2.27. So like he had already mentioned, you know, that there's areas that are heavily littered. And this is just, you know, pointing out some of those areas, some of those roads that were threes and fours, like Gem Town Road, and there's a Milton Avenue. Don't ask me how to get there, because we got really confused when we got back in through there. But anyways, it was a, it was a pretty heavily littered area as well. So just bring that to your attention, that we have done that. And we have a lot of events coming up. March is Keep Tennessee Beautiful Month. So with that in mind, Keep Tennessee Beautiful has come up with a, a theme for this month, which is trash or size. So we're encouraging individuals to get out and pick up trash, and while they're doing that, they can get their exercise. We are giving out free litter pickup supplies. We're providing people with a grabber, a vest, gloves, and some bags, and encouraging them to get out and pick out, pick up the litter in their own roads and their own communities. Last Saturday, we did, we were present at Del Rio and Parrot's Fall and Grassy Fork. This Saturday, we'll be from 8:00 to 10:00 at Edgemont Elementary, the Tennessee Division of Forestry Office, and at Cosby High School. Then on March 27th, we will be at the Tanner Building, Smoky Mountain, and Center View. So we're trying to encourage people to get out and get those supplies and pick up trash along their own roads. We have some other cleanups coming up. March 20th is the Douglas Lake Cleanup. April 24th, we have the Foothills Parkway Cleanup. June 6th is the Pigeon River Cleanup. And then we normally do a Spring Clean Your Home Event, where we did household hazardous waste and electronics recycling. TDEC has pushed that off until September, so it will be September 18th that we will be doing that at Myers Diversified. So just letting you know some of the events that we have coming up and let you know that we need a lot of volunteers, especially for the lake cleanup. So, thank you.
My goodness, it hurts you a lot, because the county's not got too many restrictions on things. One of the hardest jobs in the city is making people try to keep their mess cleaned up. You know, if you've not got pride, no matter how many people you got, whatever, it's not going to help. If you look around our county, they've not got any restriction much on what they ask out of people. And you find that difficult enough to deal with?
Yes.
I crossed the place the other day, boy, they could have a field day.
Yes.
Getting worse all the time.
And a lot of people don't understand when they call and complain about a place, it's like, I can't do anything about it. It's private property. Can't do anything about it. So, yeah, it's difficult, because if people don't have pride, they're not gonna, they're not going to clean it up, so. But thank you so much.
Thank you, Ricky. All right, no, there is no old business to be discussed. We're on the new business. Item A is consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2021-01, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
Mayor, I'll be to capture that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance 2021-01, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2020-2021, on the first reading.
You don't need any motion for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you've heard the, you need a roll call for the motion. Need a motion first.
I need a motion to approve ordinance number 2021-01.
I'll take him.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2021-01, budget amendment for the city of Newport. It has been properly seconded. Please approve or signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, we need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Audinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B is consideration of traffic light upgrade on Cosby Highway.
Mayor, when you come down into town, again, coming, coming north down the Cosby Road, coming into town, or coming across the interstate, the new, they upgraded the traffic light at Wiggles about a year, year and a half ago, when, when Wiggles expanded into the back and put the truck terminal in the back. And one thing that we kind of thought they would do, that they didn't do, is put a left turn arrow there for folks wanting to turn left to go down into the Old Cave Church Road. We've had a ton of complaints by the business owners there on the corners, by the residents down, that live down in that area, about the, the difficulty, the degree of difficulty to turn left to go down into there. And so at the request of some of you, some of you all, and also the mayor, we have, it took, you'd think it'd be a simple thing to get quotes on something like that, but it, it took forever. But there's only two companies that do that around here, and they're in your book, Progression and Stansel. And we had each one of them to come and look at this about, about putting that turn arrow in. And Stansel wanted, wants $7,000 to do it, and, or Progression wants $7,000 to do it, and Stansel, it's, what, let's see, I've got that sign in my eyes. Is that a six or an eight? I can't tell that sign in my eyes.
Seven thousand.
Yeah, this one.
And then Stansel was 6622.
Yeah. So it would be our recommendation that we go with, with Stansel. I know you all hadn't approved, taken bids on this, but y'all had said you wanted us to look at it. And so I know, so it's kind of a twofer, you know, approving, doing it, and then also accepting the bid.
We need a motion for each. We know, combine them. Okay. All right. All right, we do have on the board then a consideration of traffic light upgrade on Cosby Highway, and a bid for Stansel Electric Company for 662260.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve, and it's been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. We need a roll call for that, since this money involved. All right, item C is consideration of requests for annual events from Cock County Partnership.
You've got a sign to kill them, right in my eyes.
Good evening. I'm here to ask permission for us to do our Rhythm on the River again downtown, in downtown behind the City Hall. It'll start on the first Thursday in June, and it'll go through July, the end of July, which will be five concerts. I'm also asking for permission for, to do the Newport Harvest Street Festival, which will be in downtown Newport, and the Newport Christmas Parade, which will be the second Saturday in December.
And the Harvest Festival is when? The Street Festival is when?
The Street Festival is the first full weekend in October.
In October, okay. Sorry. Any guys, any, any questions?
I make a motion to approve your request.
I see. Excuse me. Normally, that request is approved without the requirement of paying the permit fee. And if that would be part of your motion?
Yes.
So I did, he said that's amended as required, for the requirement of a payment of, of the fee to go forward. Okay. Fee would be waived? Okay. Everybody understand the motion then? All right, we did have a motion by Mr. Audinger. Did we have a second?
Second.
Okay, coach is second. We have a motion on the board to approve the request for annual events from Cock County Partnership. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for what you did.
And one thing I would just quickly point out, last year, even during the pandemic and during social distancing, we still had good turnouts at the, the concerts. We spread everybody out and limited contact, and we still, I, I didn't know, you know, how many people would actually come, but we, we still had decent turnouts to be in the middle of a pandemic, and, and everybody did a good job at keeping everybody spread out.
I'm assuming that this has been approved, but could be rescinded based on conditions at that time?
Yes.
Okay. Item D is consideration of amendment, amended and recodify of the general orders for the Newport Police Department.
If y'all recall last, at the end of last year, in keeping with the governors, the International Association Chiefs of Police, the Tennessee Association of Chiefs of Police, and mandates from the White House, we had to change our general orders a little bit, making chokeholds against our general orders unless you're fighting for your life. And what this will do, will just incorporate what you all passed last winter and put it, and it'll recodify 5.0, which is use of force and weapons, and it'll just put it in an organized codification, if you will. It doesn't change the wording, other than just codifying it to make it flow evenly.
Okay, you have, you've heard the presentation. Then we need a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion to approve. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, then properly seconded, for consideration of amended and recodified general orders for the Newport Police Department. We don't need a roll call for this one, I don't suppose, but please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And nays like, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all.
See what the police department does, Maurice. Tell them I'll have a hope. Alderman, Britain Woman, appreciate it, okay?
We appreciate y'all's support.
And item E is discussion of auditor contract for the city of Newport.
Thank you. On this, this is the normal time of year when we would get our audit contract and have that process started. A little bit of a snag, the audit from fiscal year 20 has not been completed. I believe they're still working on that at NU. So we can't turn in that audit without it, but yet the comptroller's office still requires us to start the process of the new audit, even though that one has not turned in. And if we don't, then we'll be considered late, and there, I don't know what they might penalize with that, but. We didn't have the contract yet when we handed these books out. It did come this afternoon, right before this meeting, so unfortunately, we didn't have time to get it to you. In reviewing it, there was just a $1,500 increase in price. A thousand of that was roughly for the city and 500 for the grammar school. So if the board is in agreement, sight unseen, or we can wait and approve it next meeting, whatever you'd like. But we would like to get approval to move forward with our fiscal year 21 audit. We do typically do some pre-audit fieldwork in June, and kind of the push is to make sure we get on the calendar. We don't want to miss their, or miss our scheduled time.
Tina, I guess, last meeting, when Joni came in from NU, did she give you any idea how, when they might be finished with that portion of their audit?
She had said at that time she was hoping within the next three to four weeks, but she really couldn't give me a definite answer on that.
Have you heard from her since then?
No.
Time to make a phone call?
No.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we'd appreciate it. Anything you can do to grease the wheels of progress, we're all for it.
Just to be clear, the issues at Newport Utilities affecting us indirectly?
Yes. It is the issues at Newport Utilities that is preventing that audit from being completed. And until that portion is completed, we can't complete our audit, and Brown, Jake, and McDaniel can't come here and present the, anything from that audit.
We need to have it approved, denied, or so we...
We need to, well, this is to move forward with the new contract for next year. That's, that's what we need to do now, is to, to rehire them for next year. Normally, we don't do that until the old, this year, the last year's audit has been completed, then we renew the contract for next year. We don't normally, those don't normally overlap. And so this year, they're going to have to overlap. And we're just asking that, that, and, and like I say, if y'all wanted the time to get a copy of the new contract, it's almost exactly like the other one, only our part went up about $1,000. It goes up a little bit every year, like everything. But we were just, we're going to see if y'all, if y'all were, were comfortable enough with Brown, Jake, and McDaniel to go ahead and move forward, you know, without having to have the audit or have to read the contract or whatever. Tina looked over it quickly, when we got it, it was about 3:30 when we got it today. And it's, it's just the same thing as always, it's just $1,000 roughly more.
It's getting done to me.
Well, we'd appreciate that.
Me too.
I'll make that motion if it's required.
Second.
All right, we got, excuse me. We have a motion on the board then to, well, to approve...
Renew the contract.
Renew the contract for Brown, Jake, and McDaniel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And begin the audit process for 2021 fiscal year.
Yes, sir. Well, our audit is, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just to, just to say, our audit's complete. You know, we've, we've turned, everything's done with our audit, but they cannot finalize the audit without their audit.
Right.
And so they no longer do their audit, so they're at the mercy of whoever their auditor is.
Well, all we're proving now, though, is to allow...
The contract.
Yeah, the contract to begin for next year.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think we do have a motion and a second. Okay. Then we'll approve by, by roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Audinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, just to brag on Tina a little and the rest of the staff, it's our understanding that we have another clean audit. In the private meeting that we had with Haley, it was indicated to us that there's, once again, for about the seventh year in a row now, I think, six for sure, that it's a clean audit, no findings.
Appreciate you, John. You made a great job. See you in there, buddy. No worries.
Thank you. And like I said, it's every department. So it's not just one transaction on one day. It's a whole year, everybody working together. So thank you, though.
Thank you, Tina. Number 10, no bids, purchase, and expenses to discuss. Item 11 is comments from citizens. Anyone wish to be heard?
Thank you for recognizing our basketball team. Thank you.
You're welcome. Job well done.
All we want you to repeat is do it again next year. That's all we ask.
I heard what you said earlier. I jerked my hand in there.
We'll stack those signs.
You wish to be heard, sir?
We'll keep on talking. Just keep on...
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, all written, all written. Mr. Manager, my name is Eric Mann. All real executives over here on Broadway, as well as a few more dancing cheer captain. I wanted to come to also voice my support for the expansion of the liquor license. I do have one of my good, close friends here with me, Ashish Patel. Mr. Patel's been in the liquor business for a few years. He owns several businesses in the Dorian Counties. And we are interested in actually developing here within the city. And it just so happens, the liquor business is something that we want to get into as well, Mr. Patel. But we also are looking to do a use of buildings. So we would like to have your consideration on the expansion of the liquor license permits we issued here, and not just one, maybe a couple, two or three. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen wish to be heard? If not, we will now entertain a motion to adjourn. You have one motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.